This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call this virtual city council meeting to order. This will be the first time that the city council has used this particular format. We're using the GoToMeeting platform, so it will be a virtual meeting. Residents, citizens will be able to call in on a number and they can listen to the meeting. And then anyone that wanted to have a public comment this evening, they have emailed in their public comment prior to the meeting and the city clerk will be reading those comments for the council when we get to that portion of the agenda. But with that being said, I'd like to get the roll call, please.
Yes, Councilor Boff.
Here.
Councilmember Stimmel?
Here.
Councilmember Strobin?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Councilmember Sveni?
Present.
Mayor Thornton?
Present. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. If there's no, no items need to be moved to the, down to the new business, could I get a motion to approve?
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a proclamation this evening, proclamation of civil emergency, and it's for rate payer assistance. I trust that all of the ci-
Uh oh. Did we lose the mayor?
Yes, we did.
The council. Proclamation, I've had an opportunity to read this proclamation. It really is a proclamation and basically what it's going to do is allow for the, um, there'll be no imposition of rate fees in this pandemic. So if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. If not, if I could get a motion to approve.
Mayor, I moved to ratify proclamation of civil emergency 2020 dash zero two rate payer assistance.
Second.
Excuse me.
It's been moved and seconded to approve proclamation twenty dash twenty oh two rate payer assistance. I would like to get a roll call board on this. The eyes and all at once is kind of confusing. So if we could just get a, a roll call, please clerk.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Boff?
Yes.
Councilmember Stimmel?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
And Councilmember Sveni?
Yes.
Thank you, council members. The proclamation has been approved. Moving on, the next is the, uh, I do have just a couple of things to share with the council this evening. First of all, as you all know, we're experiencing unprecedented times as a result of the worldwide COVID-19 pandemic. Nothing in this evening to go over medical data we all have been inundated with and have been reviewing from many different news sources. But as we all know, the numbers are staggering. I want to take a moment to thank all the first responders, hospital workers, essential workers, and especially the city staff for their dedicated service during these extremely difficult times. I also want to take a moment to thank everyone for following the stay at home and stay healthy orders, social distancing, and taking extra precautions to stay healthy. The way that we're going to beat this pandemic is to follow those instructions and, and everybody's going to have to work together to bring this to a final conclusion. So appreciate everybody following the stay at home, stay safe orders. And as we all know, in the coming months and years, we'll be dealing with many health and economic costs to our country, state, and community caused by the pandemic. But I just want to assure the council that going forward, the city will work diligently to access any external stimulus funding or rescue funding made available by the federal government. We will also pursue economic stimulus grants to help people get back to work and get the economy up and running again. And Jeff Swanson will have a little bit more about that in his report later this evening. And also that the city will continue to work to minimize the impact of this pandemic to our community. City staff will establish and adhere to a cost reduction plan focusing on discretionary spending and deferred expenditures. I look forward to working with all the city council members in the weeks ahead as we address some of these challenging times that are, are ahead of us. So, um, yeah, it's pretty devastating right now and, uh, but I'm confident that we'll get this behind us and we'll get back to some sense of normal here real soon. One of the things that I want to share with the council and let everyone know is that the Our Day Celebration for this summer has been canceled. The Our Days Committee met several times and the decision was made to cancel it. As of right now, the Concerts in the Park Series have been canceled until further notice. As you all know, those concerts starts in June and they run through the end of August. So we will continue to monitor the, what the orders are going to be from the governor. And if further, later in the summer, if possible, we'll re, uh, we'll have some of the concerts. Also, as I understand it, um, organizers for the garage sale are, the citywide garage sale that takes place in towards the end of July, the organizers of that are still moving forward with it with the contingency that if, for whatever reason, we won't be able to have it, that it will be canceled. So that's also something I wanted to mention this evening. And, um, and then also just to mention that next month I will not be having my mayor's town hall. It's on the first Wednesday of the month, once again, for May. So that's what I have this evening to share with the council. The next thing on the agenda is the attorney's report. R, do you have anything for the council this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Shortly after our last council meeting on March 25th, there was a decision from the growth management hearings board related to the urban growth areas and annexations. I sent out an email giving an explanation of that decision. Just to briefly recap it, the Clark County filed a motion with the hearings board to be found in compliance with the requirements of the Growth Management Act. In response to that motion, Futurewise filed a motion asking the hearings board to determine that the county had not taken reasonable steps to accommodate growth within existing urban growth areas and to be found still out of compliance with the Growth Management Act. The hearings board denied Futurewise's motion, citing to the Court of Appeals decision that said that all the issues related to annexation were moot, rendered moot by the incorporation or the annexation of those areas into the city boundaries. And the hearings board determined that it would rescind its determination of invalidity and find the county in compliance. So that was the decision of the hearings board. The time to file an appeal from that decision expires on April 27th. So I'll be updating you with whether or not there's any appeal from that decision or not. The second thing that occurred again right after our meeting was the Attorney General's Office issued some guidance on compliance with the governor's prop proclamation 2028 for the stay home order. And specifically relevant to us was the Attorney General's Office provided some guidance as to what actions could be taken during meetings. The proclamation from the governor said that actions could be taken if they were necessary and routine or if they were to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. Essentially, the Attorney General guidance said, well, we'll give our normal dictionary me, meaning to the terms necessary in routine. So necessary is if it's required to be done, if it's needed or essential. And routine is whether or not it's performed as part of the regular procedure of the governmental entity taking the action. So nothing too detailed. Obviously, there's not been enough time to have any courts weigh in on the meaning of those terms. But mostly out of curiosity, I looked at some agendas of other cities in the area. I looked at Battleground, Ridgefield, Camas, Washougal, Woodland, and found really that there is pretty striking similarity in the types of items that are being included in agendas during this month or so that the stay home order's been in effect. Other jurisdictions have canceled meetings of advisory boards like planning commissions or park advisory boards as we have. Other jurisdictions have reduced the number of meetings being held by their legislative bodies. So I think we're pretty much right in step with what I'm seeing other jurisdictions do. Other than that, I've been working with staff on a number of different projects and I'm happy to answer any questions that, Mayor, you or council members have.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for the city attorney this evening, council?
No.
I'm a little confused. I thought the appeals and all that stuff was all done. Are, are we finally getting to the end of this?
I, I think we're very close to the end of this. The, you're right, the appeals that went to the Court of Appeals have been determined. The Supreme Court has not taken any action. So it was remanded back to the hearings board for the entry of orders or actions consistent with a Court of Appeals decision. So it was at that point that the county filed a motion to be held to be in compliance with the Growth Management Act. And so it was at that point that Futurewise brought their motion. And it's sort of a circular thing where the hearings board then recently entered the order finding the county to be in compliance and that order is subject to the potential of another appeal.
Wow, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the city attorney this evening? Okay, we'll move on. And my apologies, I did pass over citizen public comment. I'd like to back up and do that now. City clerk, do we have any comments from citizens this evening?
Yes, sir, we have one from Arlen Wood, 1027 West A Avenue, La Center. Says, "Mayor and city council, I still have questions on the house being built in Gordon Crest Development on Lot 26." Question one, when did the Public Works Department provide the height exemption and how was it communicated? How is that documented? Question two, when was the mayor and city council informed this house was going to be 12 feet plus higher than La Center's municipal code 18130070 on height regulations? Question three, who does the Public Works Department report to in a public comment?
Okay, thank you for that. And so noted, I know city staff is diligently working with Mr. Woods to bring this to resolution and there'll be more on that coming in future meetings. So again, thank you. So next on the agenda, council member comments. Councilmember Boff?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. There was no C-Tran meeting this month. The regular meeting was originally scheduled for the 7th of April. And because of the coronavirus situation, that meeting was canceled. And there was a full day work session scheduled for Friday, the 10th, and for the same reason that, that too was canceled. On a different note, with the nicer weather we've had the last couple of weeks excluding today, a lot of people are out and about. I've been out walking quite a bit, seen a lot of our citizens. And there is a lot of great social distancing going on. So I just want to thank the citizens of our city for complying with, with the stay home, stay safe guidelines. It's, it's really gratifying to see. And that's all I have.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Stimel?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say one thing for, just to remind folks to be patient with the kids. They're a little more rambunctious, maybe a little louder and maybe louder later into the evening than normal. All of their sports have been canceled, schools canceled, no recess. They're cooped up in the house and I keep cringing waiting for my neighbors to complain about the noise. So far, no one has, but I imagine it's very similar like that all over the city with kids being a little bit more rambunctious. So I would just encourage folks to be patient with them. Going out for a nice leisurely walk in the evening doesn't do it for them. They need to climb and run and jump. So try to be patient with the kids. That's all, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Williams?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Again, to echo what Councilmember Stimel said, we have to be patient. I know with this warm weather, it's been difficult. We did have a lot of people down at John Pollock Park last couple of days. A lot of people and also under the, under the bridge, parking was all full under there. And I, I didn't personally witness it, but one of my neighbors had gone down there and said that there was, it was full. People were picnicking, probably not the best thing to be doing right now. Uh, I know it's difficult. We've all been locked up in the house. We're only going out as very seldom as necessary. So please be patient, please continue following social distancing. And what Councilmember Bob said, a lot of people walk by my house and I do, you know, we talk, but they're on the other side of the street. It's nice. So we just have to be patient here. Anyway, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Very good, thank you for that. Councilmember Strobin?
Kind of not much to say after those two went already or those three, right? Except for not only exercise patience with your kids, but with your spouses. I was reading about something, uh, this domestic disturbance is up tenfold. So remember to exercise that patience with your loved one. You have to see them the next day. That's all I have tonight.
Well said, thank you. Councilmember Sveni?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to just follow up on what's already been said and thank everyone for the patience and following the orders that have been announced and just continuing to have that patience and that fortitude to stay the course and keep one another safe and healthy. Check on our seniors and our shut ins. Make sure that they're getting what they need and they don't feel totally isolated. It, it becomes very difficult and leads into a lot of depression with our elderly when they don't, aren't able to get out and go to their churches, aren't able to interact with their groups. And many times their family members live a distance away. So let's just be cognizant of all of that and try to reach out and practice kindness. Show what our city is all about.
Very good. Yes, kindness and patience, that's the order of the day for sure. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda are staff reports. We do have four staff reports this evening and we'll begin with the finance staff report presented by the finance manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, council members. And in finance staff report, you can see, first off, on page one, we have the quarter one budget to actual for the fiscal year 2020. And as you all know, businesses, schools, government offices are closed. The impact of the revenues on the city, we, we're not quite sure. It's a little premature to really do any projections or try to figure out what, what the impact would really be. But obviously, there will be some. And the city has received notices from the state of Washington and Clark County regarding potential deferrals and delays in ribbons of funds collected on behalf of the city. To date, these delays and deferrals are short and appear to just be the result of additional processing time. We are monitoring that just to see what's, what's going to happen there. Uh, moving on to page two of the staff report. Here we have the budget actual for the general fund. And as you can see, some revenues are falling below projections for the year. This may be due to the delays that I just mentioned or because of some of the other revenue impacting activities throughout the state. And like I said, it's a little bit premature, but you can see the total tax, we're at 17.13% of revenues for the year. And then total general fund at 17.55%. Below that, you can see the expenditures by department and as a total, we're at 29.96% for the year. Moving on to the next page, this is our enterprise funds, the La Center Sewer and Stormwater Enterprises. And it's notable that the revenue and expenditures for the sewer enterprise are very close to projections and revenue for stormwater enterprise funds are all very close with expenditures slightly below. So we're, we're on track with our enterprise funds. Then the final page of the staff report is the gambling tax and you can see their revenue through March of 2020. And you can see March of 2020 is highlighted red with an asterisk. This is card room activity only. The tax payments are deferred and have not been received by the city. And that concludes my staff report.
Very good, thank you. Any questions, finance manager? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the next staff report. So the next staff report is community development and Jeff Swanson will be presenting that this evening.
Evening, Mayor and council. Glad to be with you virtually this evening. Can see your faces this time. I'll start with a couple of brief comments in the narrative like I usually do. So first, an update on the Case Pizzito report in the implementation of the recommendations. So we've got a basic tracking system or mechanism for projects as was recommended we develop. And the staff are looking to populate that system with data. And that'll, that's the 1.0 system. We will work to transition that to something more efficient after we get this up and running and work the bugs out. Case Pizzito also completed a memo analyzing our fee schedule and some related city code and has made some recommendations there. And we are working to implement those recommendations. We just received a memo in the last few days, week or so. The mayor mentioned some state and federal funding for stimulus. And it's rumored that there's, the CARES Act was passed and it's rumored that on the heels of that here in the very near future, there will be a large stimulus package of a significant infrastructure component at the federal level. So working with the mayor and Lloyd Halverson and other city staff and consultants, we've compiled a list of projects for which we are intending to pursue funding. Top of the list is the East Forest Street Breezy Creek project pursuing construction funding. We've worked with the, uh, with PBS Engineering and Environmental who was recently awarded contract to do pre-construction work to design and permit. We worked with them to get kind of a quick estimate of what's the, of all the options, what's the worst case scenario for construction funding? How, what's the most expensive this could be? And, and we've come up with a number and we're going to pursue that number for some kind of federal appropriation. And then we'll continue along, of course, with the process with options and design and, and eventually get to construction, hopefully sooner rather than later. The second is the city's alternative improvements, construction funding for that project. And we worked with, um, Johansson Wing Architecture, who has been designing those improvements and finalizing construction documents. And they've given us a figure that we can use to pursue some state and federal funding there. The third project is the town center building and some parking lot improvements. We're looking at some construction funding to upgrade the kitchen into a true commercial kitchen for the Meals on Wheels, which is regularly divided from there. And to make the parking lot improvements that were discussed as part of the budget process last fall. The historic town center planned action area, subarea plan, the project funding for that. We're seeing if there might be some source of planning, grant funding available either at the state or federal level to fund that project. We've also identified a couple other projects. We've heard, of course, public comment concerns about Northwest Pacific Highway, especially with the Riverside development and with Chris Stunstrom's development coming in behind that one, the recent Peterson annexation. The, the far end of Pacific Highway on the, uh, on the urban boundary, the jurisdictional boundary, incorporated area boundary rather, seems to be developing before the newer areas. And so what we're going to see are gaps in front of improvements. Uh, in addition to that, because of the I-5 North Bridge over the East Fork of the Lewis River being weight restricted, we see a lot of heavy truck traffic come through the city and it's wearing down the pavement on Aspen Avenue, on West 10th Street and on Pacific Highway. So there's a story to tell there, both in terms of constructing that facility all the way out to the jurisdictional limits as a complete streets facility and to mitigate for the impact of the state and federal system on our local streets. And so we're, we're working on coming up with some estimates there, high level, you know, planning, engineering estimates for what costs would be involved. And we'll go after funding for those projects as well. But the other note in my staff report has to do with the governor's proclamation and how that's impacted the building department. And so because of that proclamation, no residential or commercial construction is allowed. Construction is permitted only to prevent spoilation or avoid damage or partially wrecked structure. In addition, uh, there's, if there is a sales agreement that was signed before the governor's order was issued, for instance, for a new single family residence, then the building department is allowing construction inspection. The owner has to supply a sales agreement to verify the real estate or mortgage transaction. And the attached to the staff report is both the, uh, the procedural, uh, excuse, related to the proclamation for the department and also the affidavit that the staff developed to allow certification for inspection of those structures subject to a sales agreement as I just described. Any questions about those, about the narrative so far and then although when the project updates?
Okay? No questions yet, Doug, here? Just want to comment, I'd like, I like the items that are included on the, um, hopefully, uh, the stimulus funding. It's a good list.
Thank you, sir.
So do we know how long it'll take before we have to redo a budget based on holding off on construction? Because as we know, the 2020 budget was passed based on construction projections this year. And if we're a month into it, two months into it, are we going to be looking at that? And if we're a month into it, two months into it, are we going to be looking at that aspect of amendment to the budget? Or having to change things, planning?
We're getting a little out of my lane, but I
Yeah, I'm sorry Jeff. Sorry, it's kind of you, kind of Greg and our mayor and Dustin, I wasn't sure who to phrase the question towards.
I surmise that we're going to have to do some revised projections. Based on how long this lasts, how long the social distancing restrictions last. And then what ultimately happens once things open back up? If we come rip roaring back to where we were, or if it's a slow gradual sort of climb out of the pit?
Jeff, I can, I can help you with a couple of comments if you'd like.
Sure, please.
So we don't necessarily have to do, there's no real timetable or set schedule for doing a budget revision. But as I said in my staff report, it's a little bit premature to really do some good projections on where we're going to stand. When things recover, how long it's going to take, how long it's going to take for the businesses to get back up to the position they were in before this. So it's just, we have to keep a close watch on things like revenues and activity throughout the city. And then with the help of the mayor, finance staff would do a revision to the budget when it's appropriate. It's just hard to say at this point. And if the stimulus does come through, this would be a big change to the budget as well.
Well, just, I'd like to add real quick, so there are lots of unknowns right now and I listened to the governor's news conference both yesterday and today and again, still a lot of uncertainty as to, you know, what the next steps are going to be as far as stay home and stay in place. All businesses are going to open, when businesses are going to open. So one of the issues that we're dealing with is just all the uncertainty. So I think it's, I really grateful that Mr. Swanson and Mr. Halverson have been proactive on putting this list together. They're actively talking with legislators as well as staff members of legislators. And we want to at least get these things working. But again, it's so many unknowns, it's hard to know what's going to happen tomorrow, let alone a month from now. But as things evolve, we will continue to react to that. So hopefully that's going to help answer your question, council member still.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, it'll probably lean into some of, some of the stuff that's coming up on the agenda tonight, so thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you.
If there are no other questions about that first part of the staff report, then I'll move into the concluding part, which is the project update. So first, I've highlighted, we have highlighted in some text that's in red. So I thought this would be a little bit easier to identify as we go month to month, when I get updates from various staff and consultants on projects. If we leave those edits in place, so you can see what's changed from the prior month. So with the Peterson annexation, the annexation, the boundary line adjustment and the variance for lot size have been completed and we're just working through finalizing that with OFM, the Office of Financial Management at the state level. The Schlantz annexation was approved February 26 by council. And let's see, actually, the, I'm sorry, I misspoke, the Peterson annexation is totally complete. The Schlantz annexation that we're working on finalizing with OFM. The Peterson annexation predates the Schlantz one by several months. On the Heritage Center Building B, it's under construction, there's framing underway. There, we're working with the applicant on improvement and permitting and improvements. And the final site plan review, which is required. On La Center Middle School, building permits have been mailed to the school and staff are working with the district on an interlocal agreement for the sewer connection and minute management, the site plan and subdivision application was received on March 16. And the city issued completeness on March 30th, so it's under review. And looks like we'll probably have a hearing, a minimum or a hearing late May is what we're shooting for. Variance, so on Schwartz B and B, the variance application for design requirements is under a completeness review. Making sure the submission there is complete. Gordon Crest One, this is a subdivision that was approved in 2006, it finished. There have been houses under construction there. There, there was a couple of lots in that subdivision where there were some issues. And a legal lot determination was needed to be made and that was issued on March 30th. Riverside, a lot going on with that project as usual, a large project. The phase one lots offsite sewer is under construction. The phase two engineering has been approved. And the phase three, which is multi-family phase, final site plan is under review. Twenty-three building plans have been approved and fourteen are in plan review. There are homes under construction. And we're working with the applicant there on a amendment to the development agreement that we have as we negotiate for the fourth phase, which is that it's a little over five acres of park property, potential park property on the north end of the development. The sewer pump station has been approved and the collection system has been approved for connection to the houses. And the developer has a few compliance items to resolve prior to acceptance of the phase one subdivision. On the Town Center Tim and Landing Project, as I noted, your RFP is largely complete in terms of having a written RFP to put out, but we're waiting putting that RFP out. Some further discussions and the further discussions that I've noted there have really to do with the budget situation and this unanticipated disruption to city finances that COVID-19 present. So again, we're looking for, we have an appropriation course that you proved in the budget. But as circumstances change, we're holding off on that and some other expenditures. And looking for other outside funding to keep that project moving forward. And so with that, I would take any questions that council may have.
Jeff, this Randy.
Yes.
On just housekeeping item, on Connor's annexation, the second one down, says it's complete. Does that move the city boundary farther north on North Fork Road?
It does, yeah, it brings it into the incorporated area.
So the city, the city boundary does move north?
Yes, it now incorporates that property into the city.
Because Mr. Connor had a little issue with county roads, they pruned a bunch of his trees. And because they thought it was county, county land. Just to know, maybe we need to go up there and pull that sign out and move it farther up the road.
Could be, yeah.
Okay, you got that one mayor?
Yeah, no, well duly noted, thank you.
Yeah, he put it up on Facebook, they chewed up, I went up, looked at it, chewed up his trees pretty bad. And he had to have the police department, I guess, go out and stop it. So anyway, just housekeeping, thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other? It just wasn't. Okay, thank you very much.
I'll go dark again here.
Okay. Next, we have the police staff report and Chief Danny will be presenting this evening, chief.
Yes, Mayor, can you hear me okay?
Very good.
Okay. My report covers the month of March when we began preparing for the COVID-19 epidemic. And on March 2nd, we just began putting out memos to the officers about warning them of wearing PPE and washing their hands throughout their shifts. Shortly thereafter, Governor Inslee's stay at home, stay safe order came out on March 12th, in which nonessential workers were to stay, work at home. I included a report that came out from the law enforcement council, Clark County Law Enforcement Council. It covers up till April the 12th as far as what's going on in Clark County for COVID-19. The numbers have changed slightly obviously since that April 12th date. But not significantly. And I don't think you want me to go through each and every one of these, that's quite a bit of information, statistics that's going on county, countywide and statewide. Involving COVID-19, some concerns and things that we can do to protect ourselves. And so forth and so on. So I, and I think most of this information that everyone's getting pretty regularly bombarded through the news and through other sources. That I don't need to regurgitate this probably tonight. Unless you deem otherwise, Mayor.
No, I, I think we've all been inundated with lots of this information. If there's any specific questions that the council members have, I'm sure you'd be happy to answer them, but I think having a report here is very helpful, we appreciate it.
Okay. The next thing is again, the, our events, our stats for the month of March. And really, there's nothing significant there, just kind of general overview of what's going on in La Center and our calls for service. And obviously, since COVID-19, a lot of our calls for service have decreased overall, so people are tending to behave themselves and doing what they need to do and proximity, distancing and that type of thing, we haven't had any issues with that and we haven't had any unnecessary reporting of those either.
It's good to hear.
We're doing well with our I guess, deaths and things like that, we did have an increase in some felony cases which involved alcohol-related events and some driving events and that type of thing and just domestic disorderly conduct situations. But that's kind of, I think countywide and statewide, that's par for the course right now. And with that, if anyone has any questions about the report, I'm glad to answer them best I can.
Thank you, chief, and stay safe.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, chief, good report, appreciate it. The final staff report we have this evening will be from the Public Works Manager, Mr. Jenkins.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens. Matt Jenkins, Public Works Manager. Have their public works report for the month of March and April. And so starting off with streets and facilities, we've scaled back some of our duties to just essential areas, but Public Works has still been working on keeping the city properties maintained, trying to prevent spoilage, weed overgrowth, things like that, drainage systems clear. And sidewalks and trails maintained, they're also still doing rounds in the mornings and afternoons. Looking for areas to repair throughout the city, potholes, road hazards, things of that nature. Staff has shut down the community center and restaurants throughout town, they've also shut down the playground areas and roped those off and they posted notices, those areas should not be used. On parks and grounds, mowing has resumed as the weather gets nicer, obviously the frequency of that's going to go up. And we have continued those areas open, open that people practice social distancing, but still are able to get out and enjoy the drinks in town. The Little League is both on their season, along with a number of other athletic programs, obviously. But if there's overwhelming, that is, Public Works can repair the concession stand stairs that are actually closing a pretty significant safety hazard. So we'll be working on those, that disqualifies essential work. On the equipment side, staff is performing annual services and fluid and filter changes on most of the city equipment, I think we're about halfway through that. There's quite a bit of equipment and working with alternating shifts and, and some higher risk employees being out has been delayed a little bit, but first, before the busy season takes off. On the personnel side, maintenance employee Corey Short, he started a few weeks back, he's doing well and picking up quickly. And not the first ideal time to onboard an employee, as we all know, but he's done a great job and has a background running and we're really happy to have him onboard. Currently, all staff are working, but we have modified shifts for employees and and looked at leave alternatives for employees with family members that they need to be in close contact with this region. On the projects, all small projects have just postponed, there's no current projects. All the plant parameters remain well within compliance permit, staff's preparing for the warming season, process will change. Biology will change, so they're monitoring that and making adjustments as we go. The first quarter of our SLS test has been performed, we're within our parameters on that and we'll continue to keep an eye on that. On the maintenance side, all the routine preventative maintenance is still ongoing, we're just cycling through. And staff has also addressed the trash startup issue, which I mentioned in my report last month. They found an oil level sensor along with oil level itself could be faulty and so they've protected that, they did that work for a period of substantial savings. On the collection side, the collection systems have been cleaned, the pump stations have been cleaned and all of that is in good working condition. As far as administration goes, the March DMR is complete and has been submitted to the Department of Ecology. Staff is currently working regular shifts, but maintaining social distancing practices, office and lab sanitation frequencies have increased. Given the nature of their business, those, those practices were already increased potential, but on there, but they have increased with the COVID-19. All projects are currently cold as far as the sewer department goes as well. And just to reiterate, I know Jeff Swanson touched on this in the community development report, but on the building department side, some of the modifications we've made for COVID-19, our staff has hired builders for building sites from spoilage and theft for Governor Ins' order. The building department is allowing homes with an existing sales agreement dated prior to March 25th. The shutdown to continue, this is in accordance, in accordance with the order to see real estate transactions closed. Staff will be accepting applications for review. They'll be following the COVID-19 social distancing procedures. No permits will be issued until the governor's orders lifted unless the home has an existing sales agreement dated prior to March 25th. The goal there is to make sure that when this is lifted, that we have as many plans through the processes we can, so we can issue permits as quickly as we can to get the builders back up and working. Inspection will be performed at the builders meeting the criteria, criteria set by the building official. And staff has been placed, been placed on alternating schedules in order to maintain social distancing. Are there any questions?
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, that's my report, thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt, good report, appreciate it. So next on the agenda, under new business, we do have a budget appropriation for planning services. Finance manager will be reviewing the staff report for the WSP budget increase.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Some background on this, the city has contracted with
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Some background on this, the city has contracted with WSP to perform the services of a city planner. The work planned for these services for fiscal year 2020 include land use application reviews, planning desk support and customer coordination, critical areas ordinance, shoreline master program update and planning commission support. These services are required to be performed by statute and approximately 50% of the cost for these services are reimbursed to the city through fees and developer agreements. Services rendered in this area have been more extensive than previously projected due to a larger volume of land use and building activities in the city for 2020, also with some staffing changes, some additional requirements on the contract have been needed. In this proposal, the city and WSP staff have evaluated the budget line item for planning services in the shoreline master program, which were two separate line items. The calling services have been billed to the city to date. Land use application review, which is reimbursable by applicants, $35,989. Planning desk support, customer coordination, $18,134. Critical areas ordinance update, $438. Planning commission assistance, $13,745. And shoreline master program update, $3,672. The services currently billed by the city or to the city for fiscal year 2020, total $71,988. Expenditures for the planning, planning consultant planning function is quickly approaching the total budget of $90,000 and that's why this item is in front of you. Moving on to the budget impact for 2020 and like I mentioned, the budget currently includes $90,000 in expenses for the consultant planning function. To ensure the continuation of services, the city staff are recommending that this amount be increased to $200,000 through an appropriation action by the council. This amount will be incorporated in budget minimum one to the 2020 listener budget once it's prepared. And so just some background, additional background on that for the council here. When the mayor and I and WSP, we had a discussion about this, we wanted to be transparent. This is not going to push the city's budget beyond what's already approved by fund. And as you know, the, the budget is approved at the fund level, but this is just an action to be completely transparent with the council, with citizens. But this is going to exceed what the projections were for the year. Uh, moving on in the report, approximately half of these expenses are reimbursed the city. However, this percentage is expected to increase once the city implements a revised fee schedule processes as recommended by Mckay Spizito, which we already discussed earlier in the meeting and recommendations from Paul Lewis and the reports delivered to the council and staff in 2019. So the recommended motion, city staff are recommending the council provide the mayor with an appropriations authority for planning services in the amount of 200,000 fiscal year 2020. And as I mentioned, that amount will be incorporated into the first amendment to the 2020 budget once it is prepared and ready for the council's review. Are there any questions?
I, I, I don't think I have any questions. Just are we ready to discuss this or? Hello?
Yeah.
Well, I, you know, I know a lot of the other county services are now putting spending, spending freezes on things and to increase a budget when we're all sitting at home and just got done going over, we're not sure what the future holds. You know, it's a little premature to give projections and yet here we are talking about increasing spending or, or increasing this into the budget. I, I just feel that, you know, this is important to the city and we do need this to move forward, right? At some point, but is now the right time? I mean, should we shelve this and sit on it for another 30, 60 days until we kind of see where we're going? Before we start approving more expenditures?
Mayor, if I, if I could add a comment to that, when we went through the projections, we looked at the activity in the city. We projected that maybe there is about 30 days less left of budget for the planning function. So that, that's why we have this in front of you is we're approaching it really quickly and we're going to hit that budget threshold fairly quickly. And I, I do have Ethan School on the line also. I forgot to mention if there are any specific questions. He's been really helpful in putting this together too.
Mayor and Council, this is, this is Ethan, and so I just want to make myself available for any questions that, that you have about WSP services and, and what we're working on and, and the combination of, of expenditures, you know, that, that we've seen. And, and so if you have any questions about that, please let me know.
I would just like to make a quick comment here and point out to the council that much of the work that WSP has done is statutory, which means by law we have to do it. So it's not like there's, we have the option to not do these, some of the work that WSP has performed. And the volume of work that's come into the city is, is, as you all know, quite extensive. What happens in the future is a big unknown right now. Of course, if for whatever reason drops significantly, then there won't be the need to use some of these resources and please correct me if I'm wrong on that, Ethan. But again, at this point, we have to anticipate that we're still going to have a sizable amount of development activity in the city for the balance of 2020.
Correct. And that, that's what we're trying to do here is just anticipate what might happen. You know, I think that the COVID-19 situation, I mean, very likely could impact the development activity within the city. It's hard to say. I don't think anybody knows the answer to that currently. But I think what we're trying to do here is just plan ahead to keep going because as the mayor said, a lot of these, especially the land use review functions are required by statute. And so we're just trying to keep that going. And so that's kind of the current planning side of this. And then there's the long range planning side of it, which is dealing with primarily planning commission activities and code updates and, and plan updates. Just wanted to quickly mention that one of those, the city's update to the shoreline master program also required by statute is 50% grant funded by the Department of Ecology. So there's a little bit of reimbursement to the city on that one from the Department of Ecology. And, and so just to kind of come full circle here, we didn't want to wait all the way until May to, to make this request. We realized that it's, you know, a little bit of, of an awkward topic at, at the current time, but we just didn't want to wait until the, the last possible moment to, to get this in, in front of you.
Right. So how come we didn't know this in January that we would need another $110,000 or in December? How come that wasn't planned out appropriately?
We've never been in this situation before.
Well, I, I'm sorry, Liz. What, what situation except that we want to increase because they need to do more work or something? I'm, I'm at a loss here. Maybe I'm not understanding.
Well, the mayor and I did have a conversation about this, this very thing, and he said, how did we miss it? Was the way he phrased the question. So he, he asked also. And I think there's, there's a couple of different factors in play here. One is staffing shortage. You know, we had a reduction in one staff member that caused a vacancy in the workload. And then also there, the city's never had development quite on the scale before. I'm sure you, you remember the, the number of annexations we've processed through the council just recently. A lot of that stuff, it, it was, we actually doubled the budget for planning for this year from 19 to 2020. So I, I was actually quite surprised when we started looking at where we stood with WSP and where, you know, the volume of work that had been through. So it was just really hard to project where the city was going to be and how much, how much support was going to be required with this volume of development activity. I don't know if that answers your question, but I hope it does.
No, no, that, that, that sounds good.
Mr. Swanson, it looks like you had something to add to the conversation.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to add in, I've been checking in with a lot of project applicants over the last few weeks just to check status. And in terms of getting through the land use entitlement process, which is the bulk of the budget here that we're talking about, they are proceeding forward with that piece. Now, when they get to the construction part, they might hold back on that major investment, but they see going through the entitlement process, going through the hearing, you know, hearings, examiner hearings and so on as a low risk activity. So they're proceeding with that part of their project and their investment. That work that Ethan does is pretty extensive. It's intensive work, but it's also reimbursable to the city. So what we would be looking at there is both an adjustment in terms of the revenue line or the reimbursement that we were seeing in the expenditure line for the cost involved for WSP to process those. I think as was mentioned, if, if the development activity doesn't occur, then we would not use that whole appropriation. It wouldn't be necessary to use it. And so there would be turnback at the end of the budget period, but I think Dustin and Ethan, Mayor of all munitions, it seems prudent to obtain the appropriation so that we can proceed with the work that we have in front of us.
Jeff, then what, what is the cost for a developer to come in and say, okay, we want to go through this part of it, but we're going to hold off at the end of this? What, what, what does that cost a developer?
Well, it's, it depends on the complexity of the project. And of course, we have a couple in front of us. You know, I mentioned the minute management that's going to go to a hearing likely at the end of May. You know, that, that'll cost them tens of thousands of dollars in, you know, their consultant work and then the consultants that work on behalf of the city to review their work. To get through that process, it'll, it'll be rather expensive for them, but they're talking about investing, you know, billions, tens of millions of dollars once they hit the, put a shovel in the ground and, and start rebuilding up sort of phase. So really the, the portion of the project they're going through where they're doing the entitlements is de minimis compared to the total cost of the product. But they want to get through that so that they can time the market and put a shovel in the ground and, and have the authority to do that from the jurisdiction. Does that make sense?
Well, I mean, it goes back to that question I brought up earlier when you, during your report, you know, do we know what we're looking at, at this point going forward a little bit? Or when do we start looking at a budget revision based off some of these projections? And we didn't really have an answer for it, but now we're talking about that some of these people are willing to go through it. And the cost of it, you know, they're, they're willing to stop after that point if needs be dependent on the, the economic development. And I don't, you know, maybe they have tons of money, but you know, spending a lot of money to sit there afterwards doesn't make a, a lot of sense to me. Of course, I'm not a builder, so I, I can't really speak much on that behalf. But I, I'm just having a hard time justifying spending this type of money at this point in time with with the extreme measures that are going on. And I understand that we have to do stuff by law, right? But what did we do before? And what happens if we decide not to go this route? You know, what if we say, no, we're not going to fund this at this point? Then what? Everything just kind of stops, right? So then at, at the end of the dollar, until it can take up again or until we can meet or talk about it again? Or am I not reading this correctly?
Well, there, there are timelines that we have to meet in terms of when an applicant submits something to the city, there's a, there's turnaround time and it's, you know, if we're meeting only once a month as council and staff, then it's likely some of those timelines would lapse and we would not have the appropriation available to do the work that's required by statute.
During COVID-19 times, okay. All right.
Think about the project and these developers have already made substantial investments in acquiring the land. You know, those can be in the hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars. The entitlement process, you know, paying 20, $30,000 to go through a hearing process before you invest $10 million in site development really is not that much of a risk. And so they want to get through that process, COVID-19 or no, so that they're ready to construct.
Gotcha. So it does that, if, if they did put it on pause, how long is those, that review good for them? I mean, if they said, no, we're not going to build right now, we've already paid the $30,000. Can they sit on it for like two years, three years and they just go back and pick up right where they left off? Or do they have to go through that process again?
I think Ethan or Bronson could probably better answer that question in terms of how long that entitlement is good for, but usually it's, it's a multi-year sort of entitlement.
Well, so this is Ethan. And so if the entitlement has been given and meaning that the, they've gone all the way through the process and have been approved by the city, most city permits are good for a period of two years before they have to either file some kind of final engineering level permit or, or begin construction. And, and so, but the timelines that Jeff, I think is alluding to in terms of the review timelines, there's a 28 day state mandated review of, of applications for completeness from the time those come into the city. And then once they're deemed complete, the city has 120 days roughly to review the application or an, an issue a decision.
And I think another, another point I want to make here is you don't want to be the jurisdiction that uses all 28 of their days, all 120 of their days. That, that's not the kind of reputation you want to have in the development and economic development community. You want to have an efficient, sure, quick review process and turn things around.
One, one thing I did want to point out that might help in some of this discussion is that we're talking about the increase in expenditures in the staff report. But if you go and look at the, the revenues that are primarily fitting in with the community development work, licenses and permits here at almost 32% already this year, and then charges for goods and services, which is another place where a lot of those revenues sit is at 30%. So we're talking about increasing the budget, but it's also kind of tracking hand in hand with this increase in revenue. And as I mentioned in my staff report, a bulk of this expenditure activity is offset with revenues from developers and permits and fees and things like that. So it's not necessarily just saying we're going to spend more money here. We're talking about increasing the expenditure volume to match with the work that the city is facing.
Hey Dustin, on, on your, where it says budget impact, you said the 2020 budget includes 90,000 expenses so far. Is that, have, have we used 90,000 or have we used 45,000 if you say half is reimbursable?
Yeah. So we would, the, the way the budget works is it's revenue with expenditure. So the expenditure line for this, this activity is 90. We've spent almost 72,000 of that 90. So if you look at the revenue side, yeah, the revenue would be in the 40,000 range right now. I don't have the exact number for you, but that's where it would end up being if, if we did an analysis, it would be close to that.
So it doesn't back, it, it doesn't replenish that fund that? Yeah. Okay. I got it with the way.
It doesn't replenish it. It doesn't offset 100% because some of these things are just customer service, like your planning desk, customer coordination, the planning commission, those kinds of things. Now you do have the shoreline master program, which is not necessarily offset by fees paid by developers or other applicants, but that is offset by the grant that Ethan mentioned earlier.
But, but nowhere I was getting at is this, this 200 or 90,000 out of going to 200,000 is not an enterprise fund where money comes in and money comes out. It's all going out and money comes in another spot. Okay. That's what I was trying to figure out. It's not an enterprise fund.
No, it's not. No fund activity only.
Okay. That's, that's all I need to take you. Okay, that's, that's all I need to take you.
Okay.
Can I just add, this is Janice, can I just add that we are also building the system inside the organization to manage the permits and plans more efficiently, more effectively, more professionally and document them. So some of this is that we are creating the system as we are handling this increase in workload. So, yeah, it takes more to do that. And Ethan and his team are advising us on doing that. And then the folks on our end are helping to incorporate those changes. So let's just remember that that's also one of the objectives. Okay?
For that. Any other questions, comments?
I have just one further comment. This is Ethan, and I just want to thank the city for the opportunity to work with the council, the planning commission, as well as the applicants. And, you know, as I said, really understand that this is a big decision. And we're doing whatever we can to keep costs down, even though we're pacing ahead of where the budget had us. And so internally at WSP, we, for instance, we always assign work to the lowest billable rate that's able to accomplish it. If there's something that can be done by city staff, such as the city engineer or the community development technician, then I always, you know, will ask them if they have the capacity to take that on as opposed to taking it myself. So just want to thank the council for the opportunity to work for the city and please do let me know if you have any questions.
Real quick Ethan, so we are burning through 90,000 already. We've not really been doing much since the end of March, which is a full month. So we've really done things for the first three months of the year. Yet we're going for another extra 110,000. How's that 110,000 supposed to last us? Another nine months? 10 months? At the rate we're burning through it now?
Well, we did actually have that discussion and we could have potentially bumped this number up, but we were going on a conservative side. So our projections, we may end up needing more than the 200,000. But because of the unknown, because of the uncertainty, we decided to go on a conservative level for the budget request here.
Hey Dustin, this is John. Was this 90,000 or this 200,000 now somewhat front loaded as we have MSP evaluate some of our policies and standards in that it shouldn't be a straight line for the rest of the year? Is that right? There's more work to do upfront as they evaluate how we were doing things, how we should be, and then switch over to planning consulting function should be a little cheaper. Is that true?
Yeah, there should be some efficiencies. We realize that's some of what Janice Corbin was talking about. But then the other piece of that is the city is currently looking at the fee schedule. And there are some items that affect this particular work activity that some adjustments made there would also provide some additional offset on the revenue side as well. Do you have those two factors there to consider?
Well, you've got a burn rate of 24,000 a month here, you know, because you said you went through 72,000 in the first three months. So that's, if you keep that burn rate up, you're running close to 300,000 for the year.
Ethan, didn't we discuss 300,000 initially? Or somewhere around there?
Yeah, it might have been.
I think we were close to that spot when we initially talked, but then, like I said, we decided to go conservative so we can wait and see exactly how things evolve after after we have some the COVID-19 situation calms down, we get to see where development activity goes.
Well, you're obviously, you're banking on some flattening of the curve here.
Yes.
But to what Jeff said earlier, I've been in communities, you know, in my job where planning departments were difficult to deal with, or the state was difficult to deal with. You don't want that reputation. And I think this is, you know, we're, if we don't do it now, Tom, we're going to be kicking it down, taking the can down the street and doing it next month. You know, so.
As long as things get going, Randy.
Well, yeah, but even, again, we're not writing a check. We're just putting money, saying we can open that up a little farther. So I think it's something we have to do. I don't, I don't really see any choice in it.
Okay.
Mayor, I move to authorize that the mayor be provided with the appropriations, appropriations authority for consultant planning services, the amount of 200,000 for fiscal year 2020, which shall be incorporated into amendment one of the fiscal year 2020 budget.
Second?
Been moved and seconded, authorized the mayor that the mayor be provided with appropriations authority for consulting planning services in the amount of $200,000 for fiscal year 2020, which shall be incorporated into amendment one to the fiscal year 2020 budget. Again, clerk, I would like to have a roll call vote on this, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Boff?
Yes.
Councilmember Stimel?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmembers Savany?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you very much, counsel. Thank you, staff. Ethan, I want to thank you for all your continued hard work and service to the city. I appreciate it. Next on the agenda, we do have a presentation this evening by Mr. Paul Lewis. This is for taxpayer agreement. Agreements for 0422-2020. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 1.11.2 is a taxpayer agreement between the City of La Center and the two card rooms that are operating in the city. The agreement provides for the deferral of city gambling taxes that are otherwise due March 31st and April 30th. If you recall, on March 16th, Governor Inslee signed proclamation 20-13, which among other things required the closure of recreational and entertainment venues in the state, including non-trivial card rooms. Subsequent to that, he authorized extensions of that closure through to May 4th. Subsequent to that proclamation, both of the card rooms closed. One closed on the 16th of March and one closed on the 17th of March. In late March, the card room owners approached the city about the potential for a deferral of the taxes that would be due March 31st and April 30th. Their request was based on expenses that they had associated with the closure of their facilities, expenses that they were anticipating during the closure period, and then also expenses associated with reopening their facilities after the required closure is lifted. Subsequent to those conversations, the parties reached a tentative agreement, which is included in your packet with the staff report. The relevant provisions of that agreement are in section three. I'll just quickly hit the highlights of those. The deferral is for taxes that are due for activity in February and March, which are due the end of March and the end of April. There would be no late fees assessed on those tax payments when they're paid. The deferred taxes would be due in the month following, beginning in the month following the month that the governor lifts the closure requirement for non-trivial card rooms. Just to run through an example, if the governor's order was lifted in May, the one third of the deferred taxes would be due the end of June with another subsequent one third due the end of July and the end of August. So that's the way it would work. A couple of other provisions in the agreement, late fees would apply to any subsequent payment dates. So those June, July and August payment dates. We would require all taxes to be paid before the end of the year regardless of when the closure was lifted. And if the card room was either sold or closed permanently, the taxes would become due and payable. As we've been discussing, there's a lot of uncertainty regarding the lifting of the closure and how quickly activity will come back. There is a possibility that the card rooms, even though the governor may lift the order, it may not be economically viable for them to operate. Just wanted to leave that thought with you. There may be a reason we need to revisit this agreement at a later date. But the staff recommendation is that the city council authorize the mayor to sign the alternative tax agreements with MT&amp;M Gaming and The Palace, Inc. Happy to answer any questions.
Paul, it's good to see you. It's been a long time.
Good to be with you.
Any questions for Mr.?
Paul, this is off topic actually, but what are other cities doing or any actions being discussed or taken for other small businesses that have had to close?
I should have mentioned that, yes. I think as you're aware, governments at all levels have put in place deferrals for a number of taxes. Sure you're aware the IRS has deferred payment of the April 15th date through to July. The State Department of Revenue is offering month to month deferrals for sales taxes. And then for quarterly, for monthly filers, for quarterly filers, they've shifted those due dates from April to July. The City of Vancouver has essentially stopped collecting its business license fee, which is a surcharge. It's based on a FTE cap. They've done that for a full year. The County Treasurer has deferred the payment of property taxes from April to July as well. So a number of, I think it was July, it may have been June, a number of organizations at all levels have put in place deferrals of business taxes.
I guess I would suggest that council discuss at some point, depending on how long this goes on, what possible actions that we could consider to benefit our other small businesses.
Good to hear that.
But as to this motion, Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to sign alternative tax agreements with MT&amp;M Gaming and The Palace, Inc.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to sign alternative and M Gaming and The Palace, Inc. Again, clerk, I would like to have a roll call of this.
Councilmember Boff?
Yes.
Councilmember Stimel?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Savany?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. I appreciate it very much, counsel. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Again, appreciate you working with the city on these sensitive matters and getting this put together efficiently.
Thank you, Paul.
So next, the city council will be going to, going into executive session to discuss current or potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42 3.110. We anticipate being in executive session for approximately 40 minutes and action will be taken at the end of the executive session. So what I'm going to ask the council members to do now is to make sure that they have their mics all turned off on, on the GoToMeeting format or platform, and we will be calling a separate telephone number with access code to conduct our city council meeting. And then after that, we will resume and come back to the GoToMeeting platform and finish the balance of the meeting. Are there any questions?
Yes. Mayor, this is John. Do you want us to leave this meeting active, just inactivate the mic, or are we starting over from scratch in 40 minutes?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I would recommend that you turn off your camera and your microphone and leave your session active. We're going to leave the meeting active for the 40 minutes that you're gone.
Okay.
For the record.
Thank you. Is all the council members okay with that? Clear on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we will turn off our cameras and mics and call the appropriate phone number and access code.
And our next meeting will be at the end of May at this point, or beginning of May?
That'll be the fourth Wednesday of the month, yeah, as long as we stay on safe order. Which my guess is we will be.
The mayor, the governor didn't give any indication today of moving things along very quickly.
I got an email from the, from them today about reopening to my business address. We've been open the entire time, but I mean with their plans, they've been keeping us informed. Yeah, they've got a laid out a vision type of email they sent out about seven hours ago. I can always forward it over to any of you guys that want to read it. It comes from State Department of Commerce.
Okay, yeah, thank you. So the time has expired now, can you confirm that for me?
Yes, sir, you are good to go.
Okay, so we're out of executive session, we're back in the general meeting. We're out of executive session. Discussion was had. But I would entertain a motion at this point.
Mayor, I would move that the mayor be authorized to take actions to resolve the pending claim, including making payment of $60,000 and six months of Cobra premiums, and to execute necessary settlement documents.
His second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to take action to resolve a pending claim, including payment of $60,000 and six months of Cobra premium, and to execute necessary settlement documents. I'd like to have a real call vote on this as well, please.
Councilmember Baugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmel?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Servini?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously. I appreciate it. Okay. So we have one more item on the agenda. Adjournment.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn this evening's meeting, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Good night.
So thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night, stay safe, guys.
Stay safe.